Good evening, in these extraordinary times I'd like to welcome you to the October 22nd meeting of the zoning board of appeals. First off, we have a third extension, appeal number 1752 McCarthy Management. The appeal was granted as saw it, October 26, 2017, and correspondence stated received on October 9, 2020. Ruth Love did request a third and final one-year extension expiring October 26, 2021. Do I hear her motion?
So movements, Chairman.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
And I vote aye, sir, as extension has been granted. Young lady, your honor.
Appeal number 2020-041, Mariano Castro, 50 Kerry Court, Riverhead, tax map number 681-117.6, APZ zoning, Bavarian's is under relief from chapter 301, section 36c, where proposed habitable space in a detached structure deemed not to be a customary accessory used to principal single-family use.
Oh, never mind. Okay. Who's to be heard on this?
I think they had a representative.
They did, it was Angel Aponte.
Good evening. Yes. Okay. State your name and your address.
Yes, my name is Angel Aponte, A.P.O.N.T.E., reside at 1330 Washington Avenue, Bay Shore, New York, and I am the agent for Mr. Mariano Castro.
Okay. You were sworn in last meeting, aren't you?
Yeah, I was at the last meeting.
Yes. Okay, anything else you had to add to things?
No, I'm coming on now because I believe we left off that you, that the board was going to speak to your attorneys about any other covenants, but it seemed like you guys were ready to approve, you didn't want to do it without the consult of your attorneys.
Okay, so, we did put some conditions on the pool house?
Okay.
And we'll read them when we do the resolution to adopt the pool house.
Okay.
Or you might have to know them beforehand.
I'm sorry?
I said, would you like me to read the conditions we are putting on, or would you like me to read the resolution, because we are ready to approve it, but with these conditions?
Oh yeah, yeah, I'd like to know what they are, please.
Okay, so we're going to say that the pool house should not be used, or furnished, or equipped to be used as living area, or overnight occupancy.
Agreed.
Pool house shall not be heated, there should be no kitchen cooking facilities except for a refrigerator or sink may be installed.
Okay.
The pool house shall not be utilized by anyone other than the occupants of the residence situated on the property, and guests of those residences.
Okay.
The pool house shall not be rented for any purpose. The pool house can only be provided electric service via a sub panel from the main residence.
Can you read the last one, please? I'm sorry?
Excuse me?
Can you read the last one before the sub panel?
The pool house can only be provided electric service via a sub panel from the main residence.
Okay.
And the final one is the pool house may only have one bathroom.
Correct.
Okay. So, that being said, I move that the appeal of Mariano Castro, 50 Kerry Court, Riverhead, tax map number 81-117.6, is located in the APZ zoning, Bavarian's is under relief from chapter 301, section 36c, where the proposed habitable space is detached structure deemed not to be a customary accessory used to a principal single-family use, be granted with the following conditions, which I had just read, and in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second.
Second.
All right, Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote aye, as certain appeals were granted, and in approximately two weeks you'll get the paperwork and continue on from there, best of luck.
Great, thank you very much, have a good night.
Okay, thank you.
Appeal number 2019-049, Flying Point Two Associates LLC, 353 Sweets Avenue, Riverhead, tax map number 60123439.1, R840 zoning, for an interpretation of chapter 301, section 8A1, where a single one-family dwelling is permitted and two one-family dwellings are not permitted.
Okay. Hold on one second, Kim. Hey, Chip, we need you. You want to put, Kim on?
Kim Judd.
She's down, she's down the bottom.
Bottom right, second.
Second from the right. Yeah, just unmute yourself, Kim. She'll just come right up, it's speaker view.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, there we go.
Hi, Kimberly Judd for the applicant, 737 Roanoke Avenue, Riverhead, New York. My clients are on as well, principals from Flying Point Two, Michael Bolo and Mr. Lowinger, I think I saw them in here. I wanted to thank the board, you gave me several adjournments, particularly at the beginning of the year, I had a ill family member who was hospitalized and passed away, and the board gave me adjournments, and recently too, in order to get this package together that we dropped off. There was a memorandum of support that I dropped off at the building department yesterday, I don't know if the board has had a chance to look it over, I don't know if you want me to go over it real quickly. There were quite a few exhibits to it, exhibits A through M. If you recall, this is an appeal from the determination of the building inspector, where a CO was obtained for the house, and we were also applying for a pre-existing certificate of occupancy for a garage apartment. And over the past few months, we were able to procure affidavits from people who recall it. As you might recall, the only evidence that we had submitted to the board was a 1979 assessor's card that showed it at its current dimensions of 26 by 22 feet. And since then, my clients submitted a freedom of information request again to the town assessor's office, and this time, they were able to get an assessor's card dated 1968 to 69, which is part of exhibit A of your package, and it was not included when we foiled the file a year ago. And this assessment card does detail the garage apartment at its current dimensions of 22 by 26, for a total of 572 feet times two, and with the assessment on there. We also submitted some affidavits from some people who were familiar with it, one is Joseph Pibczynski Senior, who lived in the area back in the 50s, who recalls the garage apartment since he had to walk past it to go to St. Isidore's Church. And then another affidavit of Eva Jefferson, who at the time was known as Eva Robinson, whose brother lived across the street, and she also went to high school with one of the girls that lived in the main house. I also attached an affidavit from Michael Sendzuluski, who ran the auto body garage directly across the street, it was, it just changed ownership again. I think George Phillips still owns it, but it was known as Lou's Auto Body, it's got a new name now, but if you read Mr. Sendzuluski's affidavit, it's pretty enlightening. I didn't know that the garage that he ran, his family ran, back in the 70s, was at one time a fire engine truck house for the Eagle Company. And he details in his affidavit that back in the 50s and in the 60s, that that's where the Riverhead Fire Department, Eagle Company placed their engine truck within that garage, and subsequently, that it, the town used, Parks and Recreation Department used it to store its equipment, and Mr. Sendzuluski says that when he opened his body shop in 79, there was still a siren switch for the fire department there labeled in Polish. But he does detail that he was familiar with the property owners across the street, and the 50 year chain of titles shows that from 1926 until recently, the property had always been in the White family name. He states that the tenants of the garage apartment used to park in the street, and he details how there was a car accident there, and he ended up fixing both cars. I also submitted some affidavits that were previously submitted to the board, and that's from the two adjacent neighbors on each side. They, particular Alan Lou, he didn't come in until 1988, but he submitted an affidavit, which I submitted to the board quite a few months ago, that says up until recently, even though the house went foreclosure and the Whites moved out, that the garage apartment was occupied until, I believe, he says, fall or winter of 2017. And the neighbor on the other side, Marson Tuckman, who lives at, who lived at 357, said that the garage apartment was occupied until he moved out in July of 2017. I recall at the last board meeting, that board member Barnes asked me to do some zoning research, to see what the zoning was back, whenever we could get our affidavits as far back as we can from, and what I did submit were zoning maps and zoning regulations at the time that the affidavits, the first two I have from Eva Jefferson and Joseph Pibczynski, state that they observed the garage apartment in the 50s and the 60s, the zoning in place was business two. And I attached as exhibit G, a copy of the zoning map. I didn't know if you had a chance to look at exhibit G, but if you flip to the actual map, I put a highlight where the property is, and you'll see where the highlighter is, there's a little square box with a flag on top, and I was told by the older members of the fire department, that is an indication of fire department, of firehouse. So, this property is located directly across the street from that square with the flag on it, which is now an auto body shop. And that's where this property was located in the 50s and 60s, which was business two. And at the time, and I also, behind that, I exhibit H, attached a copy of the town zoning ordinance, number 26, that was effective in 1959. At that time, when this property was in business two, was it permitted to use one-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, multiple-family dwellings, apartment houses, apartments over fireproof commercial stores. And that zoning, business two, a change, it looks like in 1969, and I attached the 1969 zoning map, which upzoned it, so to speak, to resident C zoning district. And when you get to resident C, obviously, that old, multiple dwellings comes out, and it goes to a one-family dwelling erected prior to 66, maybe converted to a two-family dwelling. And that stayed in the code until 2000, and in 2000 that was taken out, but presently the property is zoned R8 zoning. So we just submit that the affidavits that we submitted from both Joseph Pibczynski and Eva Jefferson, recall the garage apartment being used and occupied in the 50s and the 60s, at the time when the zoning of this area was business two, which we believe that the garage apartment would have been a permitted use at that time, and it would have been not permissible starting, it looks like in 1969, when resident C zoning was implemented.
So, Kim?
Go ahead.
So, just to follow along, and I'm trying to get my thoughts, I see, let's start from the assessment card. The assessment card references the westerly 50 feet of lot 50. So, that's obvious that that lot was single and separate from the front lot at the time, when this card was drafted, or this was so-called in 68, 69. So it says garage apartment, 22 by 26, 572. Just to correct for the record, the $2 is per square foot, that's the assessed value? It's not, it doesn't mean like it's-
Oh, it's not two floor, okay. All right.
Yeah, that's what that means.
Okay.
When I was the assessor back in the early 80s, you know, I was reading these cards back then, trying to figure out what their methodology was in the 50s and the 60s, so...
Who's speaking now, I can't tell?
What's that?
Who's speaking, I can't tell?
Librae.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, so that being said, that was a separate lot, and for some reason, I guess, through a chain of title in 1975-
Yes.
-they became merged as one lot, and I guess it was all family transfer, as I take it, without doing any heavy research, yes?
I did research it with the town attorney, the deeds never split that lot off, it wasn't done by the White family, it looks like maybe it was done in error by Suffolk County.
This could have been, I don't think it was so much an error, is that the card itself, the assessor's card described the back lot, as Suffolk County shows it as two tax lots. Why was that, I don't know.
I, well, we have people to see that either.
I don't think we have time for that, but, that being said, let's just say that, let's say that the apartment back there has existed all this time, but there was a merger, whether it was a mistake or not, and there was never an application to make that a two-family, that I ever found in any of the files. Do you have any evidence that they've made application to make it a two-family?
No.
And if they did, and if they made it a two-family, it would have to be in the same building. If you look at our definition-
And I understand that part-
So they're separate, you know? Right, right, that's okay, but, but-
Yeah, no.
At that time, you know, these are the things that are not clear in the record, as far as I'm concerned. I know that you have affidavits, that's great, people recall things, and that's, I understand that, but how that came about in the past, and how the apartment was rented consecutive years, and not lose its pre-existing non-conforming use by abandonment, I don't know why it wasn't rented all those years, and you said prior, I think it was 217 or whatever, but the people that lived there-
I believe it was always consistently rented.
That I got-
I have to say, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
I, can you hear me? So, we did speak, and when I say me, I say myself and my clients, there were a lot of people that do recall this garage apartment, but for some reason, only the two that we, the three we submitted were willing to submit affidavits.
I see.
Curiously, curiously, a lot of the people didn't want to write an affidavit because of some animus they had towards the prior property owner. All I can say is that the three that we did submit, detail it from its existence from the 50s, the 60s. Michael Sendzuluski says from 79 to 91, it was always rented, and Alan Lou says from 88, which is before Michael Sendzuluski's affidavit, from 88 up until 2017, that the garage apartment was occupied. I don't believe it ever lost, that it was ever not rented or not occupied, I think it was always-
Right.
The White family owned it, and I did not speak to, I know my client spoke to one member of the White family, and he can speak to that, I did, she was not willing to write an affidavit either, but I think it's pretty well-known in this area here, that the Whites always consistently rented this apartment out, and that-
Right, but keep in mind, it was always owner occupied, too.
Yes.
Okay, so in this case, even though if it was established that it would be a two-family, if we can even say that, we can say that, the owners don't live there, so there's no, like, and they don't plan on living there, I know that. So, as the record shows, and we go back in all those years, even when I look at the old resident C, there was, there was an amendment to the two-family, to allow a two-family, and then they repealed it in 77. So, you know, there's a question of when did all these things occur, were permits made, were applications made, and was permission granted to this family?
That's-
I think that they've operated all these years without a certificate of occupancy, and/or they leaned on the fact that it was pre-existing non-conforming uses, but at some point, they have changed, those uses have changed over the title search and over the years of zone changes, so it's really hard to pinpoint this down.
Kim, I just have one question. Kim, did they ever get a rental permit?
They were denied.
Do you mean the Whites or my family?
Yes, yes, the prior owners who rented it consistently, the owner occupied, you know, the old owners, did they ever get a rental permit, you know, prior to-
Not to my, not to my knowledge, no. There is a building permit, which led me to think that there must have been a CO at some point, there's a building permit for the back deck, that was issued by a building inspector, not you, Mr. Barnes, but there was a-
No, I know, it was Richie Podless, I know.
Okay, so, it was, and I do know that there was a fire in the building department, and that records were lost, I was always curious if there was a pre-existing CO for this property, and it got lost, because there was a building permit issued for the deck, and I can't see a building inspector issuing a building permit, a CO for a deck with no primary use attached to it.
That would be a logical argument.
I'm sorry?
That would be a logical argument, but also, there may not be on the file, a letter of pre-existing use, because people don't usually apply for them until they sell the property.
That could be-
So, it doesn't necessarily mean they had one, so, so there's still a lot of questions that need to be answered, but I think we have enough here to try to make a decision, but, you know, it's up to the rest of the board members what they want to do.
Can I just let my client, Michael Bolo, speak? He just wants to just tell you about his conversation with a member of the White family that he did get to speak to.
All right, Mr. Golis, Kylie, raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth about the truth of God.
I do.
State your name and your address.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
State your, state your name and your address.
Oh, Michael Bolo, 4 Water Street, Brooklyn, New York, 11201. Thank you, board members, I appreciate the time and your listening to our case. I did speak to Karen, I believe her now-married name is Greshman, and she did, she did corroborate that someone did live in the back apartment, the back house, for many years, and I understand that due to, this house in particular, I think was left to one of the family members, and the other family members didn't get a part of it, there was a lot of animus, and she was not willing to go on record and, you know, write an affidavit, although she did mention that there, it had been occupied, and I think from all the documentation-
Mr. Bolo-
I'm sorry.
It's real tough for the board to accept the testimony that you're giving, because you're, you're testifying under oath to a conversation that you have with someone else, and typically that's referred to as a hearsay statement, so normally-
Okay.
You have that person come in and testify herself, and if she's unwilling to, that's unfortunate, but the testimony that you're giving regarding the conversation and what she said to you, really can't be considered by the board.
Okay, I was just trying to add, add some color, but okay, that's the way-
I just want to make it clear to you that they can't consider that in making the decision.
Okay, understood. When we, when we took possession of the, of the house, someone asked about a rental permit, the very, very thing we did, one of the first things we did is we applied for the, you know, the two-family rental permit, in which, you know, all this popped up. We had looked at tax records for years, it's been taxed with the two-family. You, in each of these zoning board of appeals meetings, you guys have asked us for information, stating continuous usage. We provided you that from neighbors on either side. The last meeting you had asked, well, prior to 1965, was it occupied? And I think we've, we've got testimony showing that as well, we-
Bolo, I'm just going to point out to you, the affidavits that your counsel has submitted, your counsel's done a very, very excellent job here in trying to put these pieces together, but the affidavits are not as good as the testimony of a person, because that person could be asked questions by the board. So while they may say what they say, the board's unable to really kind of dig into that information, and so the value of them is limited to just what they say.
I just wanted to point out, though, that if you apply for a pre-existing CO from the building department, what they do request are affidavits, and so I would have to disagree that the affidavits don't have as much merit, because that's what the building department asks for when you're applying for a, a pre-existing certificate of occupancy.
Right, but that's not the only thing they consider, they look at all the other records and things like that, so-
Right, and so, I feel that, that giving the zoning designation, I think we've got one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, five affidavits from people who all state that this thing was, this garage apartment was always occupied, it was always in use, that they observed that it was being in use, and that the zoning regulations at the time that the first affiant saw it in the 1950s, was when something, a use of this type was not regulated, and allowed for a multi-family type use.
Do you have-
And the assessment call, too.
Do you have testimony that it goes back to the 50s, prior to zoning?
Well, exhibit B, isn't that the 50s? On page one. No, exhibit, exhibit B.
Exhibit B, I know, I'm looking, I'm looking, am I looking at the same B as you? B, oh.
Well, there's a lot of Bs here. There's our original-
Affidavit of-
Original submission, and then there was an addendum of, or our support, so if you look at B here, this is B. Are we talking about Jefferson?
B, the affidavit?
Affidavit of Joseph Pibczynski Senior.
You mean Pibczynski?
Whatever.
So it's not B.
At least that's A.
Absolutely. Okay.
A is the first one, was the garage, and then exhibit, or, B is the affidavit- A is the first one was the garage, and then Exhibit, or B is the affidavit from Joseph Posinski, Sr., stating that the garage apartment existed in its current configuration, garage on the first floor with an apartment on second story, and was occupied in the 1950s.
Okay.
Well, again, we can talk about how far back it goes, but we can't figure out, and do we have enough proof that it was leased consecutively for?
And it was on a separate lot.
Yeah, at that time.
And then at that time, it was on a separate lot. So it could have been basically a single-family, separate, single-family dwelling on top of a garage.
Yeah, there's some parts of the records that indicate that at one time there was another house back there, and then that was knocked down, and the garage was built with the apartment.
That's, yeah, that is not what the, to everybody I've spoken to, that's not their recollection of it.
Right, that's fair, that's a fair statement. But I know I read somewhere that that's what happened.
Well, I understand, I just submitted all this information yesterday, and I know that the board members probably haven't had a chance to look at it. Like I said, I just submitted it yesterday. I understand if you want to take some time to go through it.
And then Exhibit F, that's another one that states somebody was living there from 94 to 2017, and that apartment was occupied during all that time.
And then Mr., the affidavit before that, Mr. Lu, he owned his house from 1988, and he wrote an affidavit as well that the garage apartment had always been occupied up until the fall of winter of 2017.
I mean, I think they really have to show that it existed prior to zoning.
Right.
Because once zoning existed, it wasn't legal. It was built after zoning was established. It wasn't permitted.
We really don't know when that garage was built.
Well, the assessment card says, this isn't in another package that I submitted. This is a while ago. The assessment card said 1929.
Were taxes legal then?
Like I said, I understand it, because I have another whole package that I submitted a few months ago. I understand if you need time to look through it.
The original application we're talking about, right?
I expect you to go through it right now and have the answers.
This?
It also did.
This?
The aerial photos of the property with the same footprint going back to the 40s.
Do you have that one?
Although, although they're blurry, there are pictures of aerial photos going back to, I believe, the 30s and 40s of aerial photos where it's the same spot, same footprint on the lot.
Those don't indicate what the use of the building was either.
Well, but it does physically show where, what was there, but.
Right, but you didn't, did you submit those?
No, but if we're talking about it being ripped down and built back up, it could have been the same spot, but I would doubt that it would be. But it's consistently the same shape and position on the lot going back.
Ms. Judge?
Yes.
There's another page in your packet here that was dated October 21st, 2020. I guess that's today, right? No, yesterday.
Yesterday.
It's the page that has Josephine White at the top, and then it's void on it. What does that mean?
That's the old data card.
Oh, okay, that's all it meant?
That was the Westerly Lot, which we believe there were two lots at one time.
Westerly 50 foot of Lot 5.
So, and that's what created two separate structures. And then somehow, I guess, the, I don't know what deed merged them. I don't know what deed that is.
And then it says?
It was, it was merged by deed.
Well, just, you know, because the assessor may have mapped it as one lot, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't constitute a merger. The zoning constitutes the merger or an act of recording a deed, as you know.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes, sir.
At the bottom of that card, it's got another void, and then it says combined with 123-4-39.
Right, that's why it's now 39.1. Two lots is now one lot.
I see.
But it's for tax purposes only. But at some point, and I don't know why, Suffolk County showed two separate tax lots. Have you ever figured that out, Kim?
No, and my client went there. I called Real Property. They, they said that this, they have no explanation.
Well, they do have.
They, they know it's not by deed because I have the deed chain title.
Well, the only thing the assessor at the time can make a request to merge it, to Real Property Tax Service Agency. I know I used to do them, but.
The only thing I might be able to say is that one of the tax maps I submitted to the board when we first started this, it shows it as two lots, 38 and 39, and then there's a, there's something on the side that says Commissioner of Social Services. So I don't, I don't know what that.
That was probably a welfare rental at one time, possibly. Are those, are those parcels separately metered? Do they have separate meters, or is there one meter that services both of them?
Yes, they're separately metered.
Okay, thank you. Right, so since they're separately metered, is there a way you can get prior billings so that you can see how and when it was occupied? I mean, you could tell by the usage of electric, correct? Hello?
Tom, Tom, didn't you, didn't you call PSENG about that? I didn't, I wasn't the one called, Tom. I don't know, maybe you can speak to that.
Yes, I've been.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
They got to swear.
Just raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, not to bend the truth, so help you God.
I do.
State your name and your address.
Thomas Lauinger, 45, Larchmont Avenue, Larchmont, New York.
Okay, state what you know.
So I was back and forth with PSENG, which then put me in touch with an arm of loco as it related to New York Freedom of Information Energy Act. I was back and forth with them multiple times to try to get historical information. Unfortunately, due to COVID, it was taking months at a time in order to get a response back from them. I'm still back and forth, but I've not gotten anything meaningful. I responded again, asking for specific dates, and they have not responded back again. That was four weeks ago, my most recent attempt.
I'm sorry, I missed what you said. What did they say?
They haven't got back to them because of COVID.
They came, my initial response, they said, I'm sorry, we were not able to uncover the information we were looking at. I was looking back into the, early in the 40s and 50s. I asked for more data because they also said there was not a primary. I asked for information around our primary residence as well as the apartment in the back. They didn't find information for either, so something was amiss. I asked them again for more information, and I detailed a broader range of dates. And unfortunately, they have not responded back. Each time, it takes almost a month to get some type of response.
You know, I'm, the, the pre-existing use was, was an except, you know, potentially, if that could be established, was potentially an owner occupied, you know, apartment on an owner occupied dwelling. So it was never, it was never, it never pre-existed as two separate rentals. Even if it did, I don't even know if that's been established yet.
So if we have two meters, I would like to see evidence of how much use was on the back parcel, if you can provide that at some point.
Tom, I, here, Tom?
Yes, we can continue to work down that avenue and try to attain additional information.
And then maybe the chain, do you have, Kim, do you have the chain of title on the old lot, the small lot?
Yeah, I had to submit it with my ZBA application. It was a 50-year chain.
Both chains are in there? For both parcels? All the way back?
I think if someone was living in the apartment in 2017, then whatever electrical information is available would be pretty fresh. I mean, that would be, you know, you could go back six or seven years and find out what these meters are.
Well, and I want to put on record also that Mr. White was an electrician and did work for PSENG, formerly Liper, Long Island Power Authority.
Oh, the prior property owner?
And he was loco. He worked for loco. In fact, Mr. White also worked for loco.
The previous property owner.
And Mr. White, the father, was also on the Board of Underwriters. And, and so, so keep that in mind, that those meters wound up that way possibly, because they, I don't want to say they had influence, but they had, they had access to those things to create the two meters at the time. We now have in our code that you would need the building department inspector's permission to put a second meter in, and it would have to meet zoning today. But that's, that wasn't the case back then. So I'm looking for the title chain right now. I believe it's in here. I think I did see it.
It's a 50-year chain of title, and I've reviewed it. I can call your attorney and go over it again, but definitely there's, there's no breaks in that title. I don't, honestly, it's, I don't know how that happens.
One more line, yeah.
In the pamphlet that's got the alphabet on the right side, what letter would this title be under?
Actually, it's not in the recent submission. It's in an older, when I submitted the application, we had to submit, it's part of the application. So that would have been last October.
Ah.
I can, I have it, I can, it's in PDF form on my computer. I can email it to the board attorney, but I did have to submit it as part, a 50-year chain of title is one of the requirements that's in my ZBA application.
I know I saw it.
Yeah, the first one, there you go.
Here you go, you're fancy. So one thing we'll agree on is that we'll work towards getting those meter readings or prior bills to show if there was an occupancy in 2017. So when it was taken, and you closed in December of 2017.
They, they closed January 2018.
Okay, I think they went to contract 17, whatever it was.
Excuse me, Larry.
Or there was a foreclosure, but.
Mr. Barnes? This book, the chain of title for 50 years is under M.
Okay, thank you. There you go. I lost my train of thought.
Sorry.
Okay, so we'll work on getting PSEG slash loco historical records.
Okay, the question I have is, was there any tenants in either the front or back building when they took title?
No, there were not.
So when you bought the property, it was completely empty?
Yes, that's correct. There, there were, there were personal possessions in, in the back apartment anyway. So, you know, I don't, I don't know how long it was vacant for, but there was no one when we, when we first purchased the property. There was no one living in either the front or the back.
So the neighbor, Alan Lu, says in his affidavit, the next door neighbor, that he thinks that whoever was living in the garage apartment moved out in fall of winter of 2017.
Okay.
So that's what Alan Lu says in his affidavit.
So then under that name, we should have prior bills, then? We should be able to ascertain that information from PSENG, correct?
I think Mr. Lauinger is going to try to get that.
Okay.
Yes.
So that being said, and all the evidence that we have at the moment, I believe we can move on and make this, and actually, if we want, we could adjourn it again.
I think they want to.
It's in the best interest of everybody to do that, I think. Okay, I want to give you all the, me personally, I would like to give you every opportunity to show us the rent. Okay, we can dispute all day when that back building was built, or restructured, or re, whatever. There are, there are some pointers in the files that show that there was a structure back there. It was demolished, it was an older home, and then it was taken down. The garage was built. And if I had to guess, it was probably done in the 70s. It's just a guess. And I've never been on the property, and I could probably tell by the construction, and I think we visited this already, of the garage, and can tell when it was built. And I could tell you, it was probably not built in the 20s or the 30s.
Well, we have a letter from the sewer company that says the sewer line they replaced in that back was dated from.
Well, that's, that's okay if they replaced the sewer line, but the building, whether it was knocked down or not and replaced, is another story, so.
I, I mean, I could tell you, I've been in there, and I'm not as trained an eye as you, but it's old.
Okay. Well, do you think you can arrange for me to go look at it with you?
Yeah, I think, I think at the last one, my client said that you could come take a look, because you asked last hearing.
Well, I brought it up, but I didn't say, let's make an appointment. I'd like to make an appointment to come look at it.
Yes, of course.
And I'll bring one of the building inspectors just to have a second eye, and we could take a quick peek. I won't need to look long. Then I can, then, you know, we'll see where it goes from there. So we'll try to get the rent, I mean, the bills.
All right, before we adjourn this to another meeting, is there anyone else to be heard on this matter? If you are, just unmute yourself and speak up. Okay, let's, let's move this on to the next meeting.
When is the next meeting, Clarissa?
November 12.
When?
November 12.
Mr. Kim, I respectfully move that we adjourn appeal number 19049 to November 12, 2020.
Yeah, let's do it to the next meeting. All right, let's go to the following meeting, which is?
December.
Is only one meeting in?
Yeah, one meeting in.
November, right?
Yeah.
When's the next meeting after the 12th?
I think it's December 10th. I'm just going to check. Yeah, December 10th.
I moved that.
December 10th?
December 10th.
And it gives everyone plenty of time to work with.
Mr. Barnes, how do I get in touch with you?
I'll send you an email with my cell phone. How's that?
Okay.
All right, let's move this along then.
Thank you.
You got it.
You got a second.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Did you say December?
Yes, December 12. We adjourn appeal number 19049 adjournment.
December 10th or 12th?
10th.
All right, we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Gazillo?
Gazillo, position.
Mr. Seabrook?
Yeah.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmore?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So see you folks when you send them.
Next is appeal 2020 032 Benedict LaRico, 164 Oak Drive, Bating Hollow. Tax map number 638314, RA 40 zoning, Bavarian's is end over leave from chapter 301, section 9A 1A, where accessory structure with attached deck located in front yard with 11.9 foot front yard setback, and accessory structures not permitted in front yard. Section 9A 1B, where accessory deck constructed north of detached garage setback is 8.3 feet, minimum required is 10 feet. And section 222E, where additions to shed increase gross floor area within a required rear yard abutting a rear street line, representing an increase in the degree of nonconformity of illegally existing, nonconforming accessory building which is not permitted.
Mr. Walter, unmute yourself.
I think I did. Can you hear me, folks?
Yes, we can.
Good evening. Sean Walter, 1938 Wading River Manor Road, Wading River, New York, for Mr. LaRico. We did, Mr. LaRico. We did, Mr. LaRico is here with me this evening. He did go back and look to see if there were any records from when he purchased the house. He originally purchased the house with another owner. That owner is, is suffering from Parkinson's disease, and they can't find any records from the purchase. So I took the liberty of trying to figure out how to look at this prospectively. So we, I prepared a covenant, which I think Don Thomas, well, Don Thomas looked at, I think you have a copy of the covenant. And really, what it does is, it says that if you were to grant this CO and this use, we would not only apply for the accessory apartment structure, but at any time, if the zoning board determined that through an investigation, that this was not owner occupied, this particular structure, or the main residence, I left it at either or, that you can revoke the CO by filing a resolution with the town building department, and then the building department would reinstitute the storage shed CO, and you'd have to basically bring it back to a storage shed. I don't know if you had an opportunity to look at that covenant, but I thought that would work well, because not only does it protect the zoning board of appeals and give you a lot more teeth than you normally would have, but every future owner would have to comply with this covenant, and if they didn't comply with the covenant, they would be given 90 days to get a rental permit from the town, and that would really cause the covenant to be complied with, and they could continue on. But if they didn't, upon, again, investigation by the zoning board of appeals, you could revoke the CO, and you would be forced to remove it back to a storage shed. The teeth of the covenant really are page two, paragraph three and four. So if you, that, the rest of it is more boilerplate, but paragraph three and four really are where
Has everybody had an opportunity to look at the covenant?
Once.
I haven't really read it yet, Sean, I'm sorry to say. But, in general, I don't like covenants, because they're really not enforceable. And I don't know who would bring an action against him and to find out whether it's owner occupied or not. How would I know that?
The same way they knew originally through an investigation or a complaint from a property owner. It, it puts the, this, I mean, this is a very difficult fix.
Yeah, it is, for me.
You heard the, you heard the testimony of Mr. LaRico. We're trying to look at it prospectively, because the alternative is that the town, I mean, let's be honest, if the town wanted him to take it down, they would have to do basically the same thing that you would have to do with this covenant, because you'd wind up having to go to Supreme Court to get an order to take it down. And, I mean, does the town do that? Well, we have in the past, as you know. I know it doesn't happen too often, but this covenant gives you almost a presumption, well, it gives you a presumption of guilt, because the owner has basically said, hey, for all the world to know, this is what I've agreed to do, and if the town can show that they're not doing it, you have a little bit more teeth if you were to bring a Supreme Court action than I think if you were to just try to do that now. Although, you do have the record from the zoning board of appeals now, which, you know, is something that you could bring in a Supreme Court action. But I, I don't have, I don't know that there's a great answer for this. I know that my client didn't build this, he did buy it, suspecting or not suspecting, you know, whether he was not suspecting or understood what he was buying, I'm not sure, I mean, he is here, but...
Bottom line, though, bottom line, he never lived there.
No, he does. He does live there.
He's living there right now?
He's lives, he's in my office right now, he lived there, he, we were talking while, during your own, he lived in a rent control apartment in the city, he's given that up. His tax returns, he said, showed that the 164 Oak Street is his primary residence. We joked around about voting. He is willing to register to vote here, but I kind of laughed for other reasons. He said, keep voting in the city. But no, he, you know, his tax returns are showing this as his primary residence. I don't, I don't know whether that's something we, I wouldn't want to make that part of a public record.
Well, no, no, because New York City's income tax is a separate one, and that is devastating tax system in New York City, so I would claim my residence out here as well.
No, this is, this is a new thing, because he had a, he was in a control apartment, and he gave that up to move out here. So this, this is, this is all new this year because, well, I'm going to say because of COVID, but...
Well, he's had this property, I mean, the town sent him a notice in 2010 to correct this, and here we are 10 years later, still dealing with it. Why is it taking so long to get this corrected? Why did it take so long?
I only came into the picture in June, and I can speak to June forward. I don't know why it took from 2010 for this to get to the point that it's at, but I mean, we are racing towards the end. Mr. LaRico understands that. This, this is also in justice court now, so this is not, whatever decision you folks make as a board, that, that, there will be repercussions, either positively or negatively, in justice court. And, you know, again, it's, it's not, nothing about this is a good situation, but I think this is a reasonable path to try to correct the situation, to give Mr. LaRico the ability to show the town that he's going to be a good neighbor, live with this as a rental apartment, and within the town of code of Riverhead. If he had done this without the 10-year history, he would be allowed to do this. So I'm, I'm humbly asking you to acknowledge the 10-year history, but really look forward, because had we made this application without the history, this is something you may well have considered and approved. Without a covenant, I might add.
And it, it's just hard for me to believe that he purchased property, didn't have a title search, and he, and the banks relied on that? If he financed it, I don't know if he has a mortgage on it or not, or he paid all cash? Did he pay cash for that, Sean?
No, he has a mortgage, and, and...
And they didn't, they didn't balk at that? They didn't have a clear title? What about the CO? It's a storage barn. It turns out to be a two-family house, a three-family residence.
I can tell you...
I mean, I've asked for the title section, you can't find it, right? Is that what the...
As an expert in real estate closings, there are few, if any, banks that care much more than the underlying CO for the structure. It's not the way it was 20 years ago. It's not. The banks, you get a CO for the underlying structure? You would be stunned at the things that I see get approved by banks, they just don't pay attention.
So you're saying that they had a survey, they did a title search, they went out and visited the property, looked at the survey, and saw that there was no CO for the house, and they knew there were COs for a shed, and they couldn't figure that out? That's what you're saying?
Oh, absolutely. Mr. Barnes, happens all the...
Okay, it happens, it does.
All the time. I, I would, I would venture a guess that in, in the files I, closing files I have right now, there's probably two or three files with people that are selling or buying, and there's no COs for structures. It's not something that the banks, they're more interested in making the loan than they are necessarily about complete COs. I mean, say what you want about Councilwoman Giglio's proposal, but the only way to correct this situation, and it would basically shut the building department down, I think, would be for prior CO fail, but it would, it would, that would be devastating to the real estate market in a, in a town. So that's something like that, it works in a village where you have a very small population.
Let me hear, Peter, do you have anything to say, the neighbor?
Yes, I'm here, and I do have something to say.
Okay, Peter. State your name and your address, Pete.
My name is Peter Tischner, I live at 26 Laurel Lane, Oak Hills, Bating Hollow, New It is my opinion that regardless of whether Mr. LaRico can produce evidence that he purchased this property knowingly, which it should be knowingly, it's obvious that this was an apartment, or is now, whether he built this or added on to this tool shed or not, it's still in question, he regardless has propagated the use of this structure as an apartment, which he has continually suggested that he has lived in, which I have proof that he has not. And I find that this type of practice in which he's suggesting that this has taken place should suggest exactly how he is intending to go forward. This has not been one of Mr. LaRico's primary residents. I have contacted my homeowners association once the signs went up, to try to contact Mr. LaRico, and the mailing address for Mr. LaRico is a Manhattan address. It is plainly obvious that this structure has been for some time been utilized as a rental apartment, that Mr. LaRico has not lived there, that did not tell the truth under oath the last time we were here. Whether or not Mr. LaRico intends to live there or not is another story. Obviously, that's what he's trying to tell you, but he's already told you something that is not true, and that he is already living there.
As far as you can see, is there anyone there now?
Yes. Yes, as of last night, I have not been home yet, I'm sitting in a parking lot to take this call, and been sitting because I couldn't make it home in time. And as of yesterday, there was a vehicle there last night that was not Mr. LaRico's, and there has been a number of vehicles parked at that apartment, which is, to be honest with you, not a parking space, it's actually the middle of Cedar Road, and has been occupied all summer long by the same very nice couple for the past three years.
All right, Sean, what do you, what do you have to say?
Sean, does that couple live there?
He has a friend that stays there.
For free?
His friend has a girlfriend, he's telling me.
And where does, and where does he sleep?
Upstairs. Upstairs in the loft. So, I mean, there's not a reason that he can't have somebody stay at his apartment. I mean, that doesn't make sense, that he can't have somebody stay there.
Mr. Walters, you can't be serious. I, I live 10 feet across the driveway, I take my garbage out past this apartment every night. I'm well aware of what's going on there. You're suggesting that you have been to this apartment? Let me ask you, did you park, did you park at the same place that people are parking that rented now?
I'm not, I parked in the back on the paper, what you're calling a paper road, which is really a dirt road owned by Oak Hills.
That is correct. It is nonetheless paper road, and that is where their parking is taking place.
And there's nothing wrong with that? Unless Oak Hills wanted to enforce that, there's nothing wrong with that?
Sir, I think parking in the middle of a road is not entitlement to parking spaces for an apartment, so going forward, that should be considered nonetheless.
Well, I mean, that is, if that is something, I talked to Mr. LaRico about that, if that is something that the board wants, he can create parking in the back, he has every right to use the road as you are using the road, because I was over there multiple times, and I see you have an entrance in the back, and you use that road to access your property in the back, no different than he does. So if the board...
But I do not park in the middle of the road, sir.
If the board so desires for him to create parking back there, that is absolutely something that can be done.
Well, and I'm assuming that, that, you know, since the last CO was granted with a variance, and the town assumed the lead on the environmental impact and passed that, that suddenly if there is a driveway that go onto the property, then environmental impact certainly would have to take place, because this is upgrading from my property, and I would certainly change the runoff from this property.
All right, I'm, I'm not sure that I'm supposed to be debating this gentleman. If the zoning board of appeals is interested in us creating additional parking in the back, that is absolutely a reasonable request.
Is this, is this gentleman...
Okay, well, let's get back to the fact that you believe that Mr. LaRico is actually living there.
Okay, I'm, Mr. Chairman, am I supposed to be debating this gentleman?
Pardon me?
Am I supposed to be debating this gentleman?
No, but, I have, I have a hard problem with Mr. LaRico from what this gentleman's saying, that the guy's never been living there, all of a sudden, now it's his space? Does he have any other properties in New York City, or anywhere else?
He has a studio, he works out of the New York City, he said.
It is also my understanding that Mr. LaRico has many other properties.
All right, let's have Mr. LaRico on.
Okay.
Hello. Okay, Mr. LaRico, you've been sworn in last meeting, you told us you were living there, and your next-door neighbor says you'd never been there. Now, do you have any other properties in New York City, or anywhere else?
No, I have a studio in New York that I rent.
Any other properties?
I manage other properties, and they're in my name.
I mean...
No, this is not a joke. I have a friend who's an investor, and for numerous reasons, she does not want to be on anything, so I am. You can do what you want with that, but it's just investment purposes for her.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm confused. You indicated that you own other properties, correct?
No, you don't understand. This is a very complicated issue. I manage the properties, I don't own them.
But you said they were in your name.
They're in my name because Connie, who's my partner in all this, doesn't want to have her name on anything, for various reasons.
All right, all right, you know what, guys, I'm going to shut that line of questioning off. I'm sorry, but...
What does this have to do with anything?
There are issues that beyond, and I think I know why they're probably in the other person's name, but that, that's not relevant to whether he lives here. I mean, you know, if he, if he's telling you he lives here, and this is his primary residence, he can show you his tax returns, there's no reason he can't have, you know, visitors stay at his house. That's what his testimony is...
Well, I believe it is Suffolk County law that a person can only own one accessory apartment.
That's what his testimony is, if he owns other properties in New York State, or if he's holding them as a straw man for somebody else, that's not relevant to this particular application. I don't see it relevant.
Sean, I just was clarifying his testimony, which was that he said he had property in his name, but then he said he didn't own it. So that, I just want to make sure that the board understands that he is entitled, he is entitled to other properties, and I think the board's just inquiring as to whether or not that he may potentially not be telling the truth as to the actual status of his primary residence, that's it. And I do think it would be relevant for that person.
Okay, well, my guess is that that would be a conversation that I would have with the town attorney privately, because I'm guessing there's a reason that those properties aren't his name, and that's not something that should be discussed in a public hearing like this. Are they residential properties, Mr. LaRico?
Yes, they're residential.
And where are they?
Ones in Brooklyn, ones where the studio is that I have.
He's got one in Brooklyn, and one manages one in Brooklyn, and one in Manhattan where the studio is. Nothing else on Long Island? Nothing else on Long Island?
Are these apartment buildings, or are these just...
Are they apartment buildings?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Two, two families and one four family.
Two, two families and one four family.
I don't know.
And I don't mind having a conversation, I don't... I understand this is a public meeting. But I think you're getting, uh, into things that should not be discussed.
We're having conflicting testimony. We have the next door neighbor says the guy's never been there. And all of a sudden he shows up and there's still two other people in the apartment or the residence and he's sleeping upstairs. I don't know.
Mr. Walter, with all respect, Mr. Walter, with all respect, one of the issues here is his credibility. And I think you'll agree with me that, that right now it's becoming an issue. That's why so many questions are being asked.
I can't understand what was said.
I said, you'll agree with me, I presume, that one of the issues here is your client's credibility. And I think, but you can see with a line of questioning, that, that issue is in doubt at this time. And we're trying to clarify some things with that.
I, okay. I'm having a tough time, who is speaking? I'm having a tough time seeing or-
Ralph Gazillo, G A double Z I double L O.
Okay. Why don't you take your mask off, Your Honor, I can hear you, I'm sorry.
I did, I did the last time.
I understand the issue of credibility. I just want to limit the questions concerning him holding apartments for somebody else. If, if the- All right. The, the issue for us is to try to look at this prospectively. If this isn't something that, um, we can look at prospectively, I, I don't, I, I don't really have an answer as to why we can't. I mean, I don't have an answer to this problem and I don't know that the town has an answer to the problem. And this seems like a reasonable, the covenant seems like a reasonable way to, uh, attempt to correct the problem. And if the problem is not corrected, I think Mr. Lirico understands, uh, completely now what everybody's issues are. If this is not corrected, I suspect you're gonna be back here in, in a very short period of time. And you could be rescinding the resolution based on the complaints of this neighbor. And, uh, you'll, you know, you'll have to make a move in Supreme Court to take the buildings down. I mean, I don't, I, I, I know this is, I just don't have, you know, I don't have a reasonable, another reasonable explanation or reasonable way to deal with this, um, other than what I'm proposing and to try to look at it prospectively. I think we can all agree, and Mr. Lirico has talked that, that there are people living there. They're living there with him. Um, but I don't have anything else that I can suggest. Is there another suggestion as to way to fix this? Because certainly if he had not done this in this manner, he could have made an application to build this. And the zoning board of appeals could have made a decision as to whether he was allowed to do it or not, obviously. But these, this is a fairly typical application if you were going to build it. Uh, and there are, I'm sure are precedents in the zoning board of appeals files where people have constructed things in sheds and garages to act as accessory apartments.
I don't want any suggestions.
Reserve.
Well, you were-
I think I've heard enough. You want to reserve?
What if he just admits he doesn't live there?
I can't believe it.
And what happens if he just-
Take your mask out.
What happens if he admits he doesn't live there and then we stop? What happens then?
If he doesn't live there?
Huh?
If he doesn't?
It's an expense and accessory. He has to be owner occupied to have an accessory apartment. If he doesn't live there, it's not owner occupied.
Okay, so that's the question. That's the question that we're trying to answer.
Hold on, please.
Yeah, he's saying he's gonna live there, but does he live there? There has been some testimony that says he was there and then some says he's not there.
Sean, so the question is, is it gonna be owner occupied? And you're saying that he lives there now? How, we, we can't seem to get our arms around that. How's, how's he live there? He lives in a room upstairs? With two other people in the place?
I'm sorry. Yeah. But they're not there permanently.
He's what?
No, they're, they're seasonally.
They're not, listen, they're not there permanently, they're visiting. They live in large-
My question is, excuse me, Mr. Walter? My question is, he there permanently?
Who answered, who asked that, is that Mr. Whitmire?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm gonna let him answer that question. He, they want to know if this is your primary residence.
No, I want to know if he lives there.
Okay, I'm gonna put him on right now.
Same thing. Yes, I do live there.
For how long?
Since I gave up my rent controlled apartment.
And when was that?
Uh, within the year.
How long?
A year. I've been going back and forth. But as far as, you know, living there, I, within the year.
All right, hold on there for a second. Next door neighbor, Peter.
July, July last summer.
Peter?
Don't say that, just tell us the facts.
I can't hear anything.
He said he gave up his rent controlled apartment in July of two thousand nineteen or twenty?
Uh, now I'm confused, what are we in twenty? So it would have been, I believe nineteen.
July of nineteen.
It's been a year, over a year.
So he gave up his primary residence in the city in July of two thousand nineteen.
And he's lived in this property now since then?
Correct.
Is this apartment or residence, whatever you want to call it, is it winterized? Can you live there year round?
Uh, it is heated, but it's not heated the way you would. He's got propane heaters on the wall.
And a lot of blankets.
And a lot of blankets, yes.
Oh, God, this is like a smoky bar show.
He does, he, he doesn't, can you hear me? He doesn't stay in the winter. He goes other places in the winter.
What about the friends that live with him, do they stay in the winter?
No.
No.
So you're saying he, he doesn't stay there during the winter? How many months does he stay there?
I'm there through Thanksgiving and I start up in, uh, what are we in? I start up in sometime in March, I'd say.
So March to, uh, the end of November. And then he goes to Florida or-
Anybody, anybody have anything else to say? I mean, I've just talked to this one.
Don, do you have any suggestions?
I mean, but this is really the only path to legalize what's there. That's, that's the only path they have, so, you know.
So could they not get down and build new?
I don't, I don't know.
They would have to have the use first.
You, yeah, you would, you-
They don't have a use.
They have to get an accessory apartment-
Not a use.
For me, right.
Use.
And, and again, accessory apartment's gotta be owner occupied. So that's the question, really, you know.
All right, boy.
And then we can get into the definition of what's owner occupied.
Right.
Because that's a, that's tricky stuff.
Right.
It really is tricky.
Can I speak for a moment, please?
Go ahead.
Um, I'm having a little trouble hearing some of the other people speaking. Uh, but I heard quite a little bit of it. And, um, one of my questions is regarding the owner occupied status of this, um, property. Um, if, if, first of all, I went to the building's apartment last week and if, and I could be corrected if I'm wrong. The application they have on file is for a legal accessory apartment. The application that I found online is for a legal seasonal apartment. So I think there's discrepancy there, first of all. And correct me if I'm wrong. But I'm looking for an interpretation here of a legal owner occupied apartment that is only occupied for approximately six months by a person who suggests they live there, but does not.
Who's that?
Who's that?
Excuse me, can I just speak for a second? I'll-
Is this on the, uh, on this property, this appeal?
Yes, it is, yes.
Yes, you certainly can, just raise your right hand. Raise your right hand. He swears to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, selfie God.
Hi.
And your name?
Yes.
And address?
Christine Hawkins, twenty-six Laurel Lane, Bating Hollow, New York, one-one-nine-three. Yes, that's me, kiddo. So I just, I'm listening to all this and I, I do live with Peter. We live in the house across the street. And I'm flabbergasted by the lying that's going on and the, the representation of the lying that's going on. I, I, I'm beside myself, so I just had it on.
Stick your mind, young lady, stick your mind.
So I just, I've, I've, we've lived here for over three years. We've never seen this gentleman at this property ever, not once. Okay? And i- if, if they're, all three of them are living together, I don't know how they're circling in the shed that this property is. And I don't understand how someone can clear mindedly represent someone that clearly is lying. Like I, I couldn't sleep with myself like that, but I don't know. It's not my job. So anyway, just, just letting you know, never seen this gentleman, not once. And I'm sorry to even have to bother you guys, but I couldn't believe what I was hearing. And, um, nothing against this gentleman, but lying, we can't have that. And we have no idea what that property is going to turn into when you don't have honesty to work with, so.
Well, thank you very much. Okay.
Thanks, hon.
Everybody have enough, we'll make a, uh, close the meeting and reserve decision here. Okay. All right, let's have a reading.
Okay. Uh, which one is this? We're gonna, uh, Mr. Chairman, I respectfully move that appeal number twenty-twenty dash zero thirty-two be held for a reserved decision on November twelfth. Is that correct?
Yes.
Hold on a second.
Second.
Mr. Gazillo?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mr. Seaver?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So our decision will come down next meeting. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, folks, gentlemen. Okay, uh, Board, can I just ask you that? I mean, I, I do have other points that I intended to make. I understand time is limited.
It's closed.
I just hope that at the next meeting I would have the opportunity to bring them up.
No, that's-
It's done.
We, we've closed the meeting, but, um, I think we've heard enough.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Appeal number twenty-twenty zero three-eight, Crown Castle, Fresh Pond Avenue, Calverton. Tax map number six hundred seventy-seven-two-two, APC zoning. So variances and a relief from chapter three oh one, section two seventy-seven, B four A, where proposed side yard setback is eighty-one point zero eight feet, minimum required is one hundred twenty feet. And where proposed rear yard setback is seventy-two point ninety-two feet, minimum required is one hundred twenty feet.
All right, who's the spokesman?
I, I am. Uh, my name is David Kenny. I'm an attorney with Snyder and Snyder. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Crown Castle.
Okay, just give us your name, your address and take it.
Sure, my name again, David Kenny. Uh, and I have an office address of ninety-four White Plains Road, Terry Town, New York. And my law firm is Snyder and Snyder.
Okay. Off you go.
This is the first, uh, hearing before this board. Um, but by way of background, uh, we've had already a couple of meetings with the town. Uh, this is an application to construct a wireless telecommunications facility uh, on Fresh Pond Avenue. I'm gonna share the screen right now to give you the drawings that we have submitted with the application. Hold momentarily. Um, so the drawings show, um, that we are actually a unique telecommunications application project whereby we are hoping to reduce the number of towers in the area, uh, not add the number of towers in the area. So Crown Castle is the manager and owner of two existing facilities along Fresh Pond Ave. And we have those marked on our drawings. There's one, a lattice tower that is a hundred and twenty feet that is located approximately two oh one Fresh Pond Avenue. Um, and there's also a hundred and twenty-two foot monopole by my cursor that's about a thousand feet to the southeast of our proposed property. Um, the project here is, um, we have some issues with these two existing sites. And so we want to make sure that we maintain, um, the level of coverage in the area um, that is being currently experienced by those traveling through in the area and living in the area. Um, so we are having an application that's actually to remove these two existing towers and consolidate the wireless carriers on these towers to the proposed property. And our proposed facility is not gonna be larger than any of the two existing. Um, the proposed facility will be a hundred and twenty foot monopole. So it'll be shorter than or the same height of the two existing facilities. Um, the reason we're before this board, um, is because where our setbacks are required by to be the one hundred percent the height of the tower. Um, and we have met the setback on two of our property lines. Uh, we meet it from the front yard where the street frontage is. We have a setback equal to the same height of the tower, a hundred and twenty feet. We also meet the setback, uh, to the property to the north, uh, which has a residential property. So we meet the setback for those two properties. Uh, where we don't need the setback and we need relief from the zoning code is to the south, a side yard variance. Um, this property is an existing landscaping or, uh, commercial use. Um, it's actually the same property owner as our current property owner. And, um, the property to the rear is vacant land. Um, and so those are the two areas that we need relief from. But the applicant has designed the facility to have what is known as a breakpoint or hinge point. Um, so by way of that fall zone radius is now been reduced to this dashed line right here, which is now forty-five foot fall zone radius. So we're asking relief from these two, uh, setbacks from the s- uh, southern side yard and the eastern rear yard. Um, but we have put into the design of the facility, um, something to help mitigate the fall zone radius in the unlikely event the facility does collapse. It would only collapse within this fall zone radius, which therefore would be completely within the property. Um, so tonight I have the applicant's engineers, uh, we have radio frequency engineers, um, experts, um, that were dealing with environmental, um, uh, reviews for the property. Um, the town board at its previous meeting just on Tuesday, October twentieth, issued a negative declaration, uh, for the purposes of SEGRA. Um, so the action, uh, before this board is for the variances. But if the variances are granted by this board, we'll go back to the town board for a special permit review and then to the, uh, planning board for a site plan review. Uh, one, uh, photo I'd like to show, we did submit photo simulations of the facility. I think we have one photo that kind of shows really what we're trying to accomplish with this project, which is if you go to view seventeen, um, we have view seventeen right here. This is an overview of our view shed. Um, these are the photo locations we took. Um, the, the dots in green were photos that we could see the facility from. And the dots that were in red are photos where we could not see the facility from. Uh, we flew a balloon at the property, the height of the tower. And so from areas where we can see the balloon, that's how we know if you can see the facility. And we did a photo simulation over the, uh, over the balloon to show you what the facility might look like. So these are some locations that are right on Fresh Pond Ave, right here where the proposed facility is. Um, but I think one of the better views that kind of explains what we're trying to accomplish here is view seventeen, which I'm just scrolling to now, where you can see that there are some places where there's an existing view of both facilities. And what our goal here is to change that view right here to one facility. So we have some places, this is view seventeen, where you can see both of the existing structures. And our project would thereby reduce, removing those and only having one structure, thereby making a less of a visual impact to the surrounding community, but still maintaining the same level of coverage and service, uh, that those in the area are experiencing today. Uh, if there are any questions from the board, I'd be happy to answer them. Like I said before, we have, uh, members of the applicant's team here, um, to explain and answer any questions that may come up.
So, so the, the tower that you're building is not located on either one of the sites that you're taking the others down on, correct?
Correct, it's a new property, a new property owner.
Okay, and, um, and how is the rest of that property zoned? And is it being used for what it's supposed to be?
for what it's supposed to be used for, that particular property?
Our cur- our, uh, proposed property?
Yeah, in other words, the owner of that property may be doing some, there may be other activities there that I'm not clear as to what he does there.
So, our, our proposed property is vacant land?
Okay, but it's attached to-
So, but those are, that's a separate parcel?
So it's a separate tax lot?
It's a separate tax lot, separate property.
So it's a vacant land?
Just happens to be owned by the same property owner-
Right.
-as, as our proposed property, but it's a completely separate property, where actually we've applied for and received a new curb cut for this property from the highway department. So we'll have our own access, this property will operate independently.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah. Is there anyone else to be heard on this matter? Any other neighbors? Unmute yourself and speak up.
Yes, hello, um, my name is Carl Bowden, and-
I'm Donna Pedrogi, we're the property owners adjacent to the lot at 338 Fresh Pond Avenue.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
State your names and your addresses.
Uh, Donna Pedrogi, 338 Fresh Pond Avenue, Calverton, New York, 11933.
And this is Carl Bowden, 338 Fresh Pond Avenue, in Calverton, New York, 11933.
Okay. Go ahead, you have the floor.
So, I know, um, David, you mentioned you had enough clearance for the north side, right? And that's actually right, the shared property line with us. So that's good. I just wanna know, do you know how, like, how far from the shared property line is the center of the pole? I know you had that diagram up before with the-
It's just over 120 feet, I think it's 120 feet and some inches. So I'm sharing the, that-
Okay, yes, that was a, a drawing.
Yep.
Okay, so, and that circle that's around, is that just-
So this right here, this circle, is the fall zone radius I was talking about earlier?
Right.
So we have put into the tower a breakpoint, so in the very unlikely event that the tower would collapse, we built it so that it would only collapse within this 45-foot fall zone radius. So we're well short of the 120 feet.
Okay, right, so it wouldn't be the whole entire thing, it would only be part of it if anything were-
Exactly, it's, it's so, basically it has a hinge point and it kinda collapses in on itself.
Right.
Worst-case scenario, it would fall 45 feet away from, uh, the face of the tower.
Right.
Well short of the 120 feet to your property line.
Okay, okay. Makes sense, um-
Okay, and then the property line on the north side, um, is, right now we're, we're separated with, um, a bunch of, um, you know, trees, um, is there any plans to do with, with, um, with, with what's currently there?
No, I believe our goal is to ke- is to keep the vegetation there, 'cause we would like that for screening for your property and for general views from the facility. I have the applicant's engineer on, um, could you speak to, Neil, are you on?
Unmute, if you're on, Neil.
Good. First thing? Okay.
Okay, Neil, Neil, just raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
State your name and your address.
Neil McDonald, WFC Architects, uh, address is 12-1, Technology Drive, Sotoket, New York, 11733.
All right, would you answer that question, please?
Yeah, so the, the, the intent here is to leave all of the existing, uh, vegetation in place, uh, the, the map that's up on the screen right now shows the topography, um, all, all of the, um, kinda the hillside alongside this, this, uh, compound would be undeveloped. Uh, we would clear the area within the, uh, 100-foot by 100-foot, um, uh, compound area, uh, but all of the existing, uh, you know, vegetation beyond that would remain, so that's approximately, you know, 60 feet or so, uh, of buffer, uh, between the, the, the compound and, and that northern property line.
Right, okay, okay.
So there may be a couple within the actual compound, but the overall goal is that there'll be everything outside of the compound, which is, I believe, the, the densest part of the vegetation, all of that will remain, um, and we won't be taking any of that away.
Okay.
Okay.
Right, 'cause we share that, um, like sloped thick part of, you know, the woods, so we wanted to keep that looking the way that it-
For sure. You have any other questions, folks?
No, I think I'm, I'm good.
Um, as, um, you know, being that our property is between, uh, PSC and G, um, you know, you know, the light, you know, the power lines, and with this new, um, with this new, um-
Cell tower.
Um, wireless cell tower that's going in, um, you know, um, obviously we're concerned about any health issues. Is there any health issues that we, we should be concerned about being that our property will be in between these two, um, these two areas?
Well, I ca- I can't speak to anything from what is PSC and G, um, but the wireless facility that we're proposing is gonna be 100% compliant with the FCC rules and regulations regarding radio frequency emissions, and so the FCC has deemed it safe. I actually have a, uh, a report that was submitted on the, the, we call it the, the radio frequency emissions, um, and so I'm gonna share that report now, and it shows that under worst-case scenarios, we're well below the threshold level. And so, I could just give you that number right there. So under the worst-case scenarios, we're only 6.252% of the FCC maximum permissional exposure, and then this, again, these analyses are done under the worst-case RF exposure, uh, levels, so that'd be if the antennas were operating at their maximum levels, which they usually never are, and even at that scenario, it's still only 6.252% or 15 or almost 16 times below the FCC level. So, the facility is 100% compliant with the FCC rules and regulations, and it's well below the, the emission levels that have been deemed safe by the FCC.
Okay. Do we know when the next meeting is?
And, you know, and this is just a question, just, you know, just me, you know, thinking, right, being that the, there's currently two existing towers in two different locations, and from what I understand, the plan is to, you know, get rid of both of them and consolidate one. Um, was, was, um, is, is, is there a thing why, why one of those existing places was, um, you know, could not be used?
So, so they have some issues with the landlord, and that's kind of what brought up the original proposal, is that there, there was a threat or a possibility that two of these facilities could be lost or couldn't be guaranteed in the future. So we wanted to make sure that everybody in this area that's currently relying on these services has a facility and has a place that we can guarantee, um, that we can provide the same level of service as everybody is experiencing today. And there is the added benefit of also the possibility, since the property that we're choosing is in between the two facilities that we have, we can consolidate both facilities.
Okay.
But we, I appreciate all of your questions, and if you have any, I'm more than willing to answer them and, and be happy to answer.
Sounds good.
I think we helped your associate rehang the sign back on the pole earlier today.
I, I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
No, that was good, very informative, I appreciate everyone's time. Um, do we know when the next meeting is? Um, I know this is the first of three, I believe, I just, you know.
So this is our first meeting, uh, with the zoning board, but there hasn't been a meeting set for us to go back to the town board, um, but it'll be on the website. Our, our next thing after we get, um, if we do get an approval tonight, would be to file with the town board and go back onto a calendar for a town board meeting.
Okay.
Um, but there are, um, there's a planner named Greg Bergman in the town, um, he's very good with providing information regarding this application.
Okay. Thank you so much, I appreciate all your, all your information.
Okay, what do we wanna do, do we wanna-
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, let's just see if there's anyone else out there. Any other neighbors out there? Yes. Wanna be heard? Yes. Good. Just raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Jerry Cohn. Yes, I do.
Okay. State your name and your address, Jerry.
Excuse me?
State your name and your address.
Jerry Cohn, 121 Fresh Pond Avenue, Calverton, New York, 11933.
Okay.
Um, again, I'm, I just wanna go over the fact that we're, uh, I understand consolidating, and I think it's great we're gonna get rid of, uh, you know, we're basically getting rid of one tower, um, but we are now hatching out another piece of land to build another tower. Why can't we work harder on getting just one of the same pieces of land, so we're not taking down more of our land? And, you know, the, the same concept as if it goes on in a lot of the areas in town where you store clothes, houses, and they build another one next to it, and you end up with a, a dead lot. Basically now that becomes two dead lots. Uh, we also have another cell tower not too far across the street, uh, to the south, um, so, you know, I understand we have towers, but we, you know, the, to start the ball rolling, you know, this is the, the new future cell towers, I understand that, but to, to move stuff and just keep moving around, why can't we just repurpose the same land? Why can't we work at that before we tear up another piece of land?
Sure, so there's two answers to this. The first answer is that the original reason why this proposal came about is because there were issues with the two current landlords, and they were putting the two existing sites in jeopardy so that we couldn't secure the long-term viability of keeping these sites and keeping the level of service in the area. So, moving to the new property gets us to a new property owner and hopefully, uh, more secure location to keep in it. There's also, as, as you've noted, the added benefit that this location is in between two of the facilities, so by putting the both, uh, there's actually three carriers, but by combining these carriers onto that property that's in between, we've been able to maintain the same level of service without having to increase, uh, the pole higher than the two existing. So there, there's a few benefits for it.
And then the, uh, from what you were talking about, the monopole, then one of those are currently a monopole 120-foot, they could not just put the stuff, you know, consolidate onto that, uh, antenna and just, again, keep, you know, work to keep that one and not tear up another piece of land, 'cause, you know, it becomes a, you know, we, we like, we love our land out here, that's why we moved here, and, and then to keep tearing down land, to build, to tear down, to, you know, it, it, it's, it just seems like we're, we're growing in the direction which we've seen happen in other areas in our town that we'd rather not see, uh, you know, this, this is a beautiful area, and, um, you know, I just don't wanna see land, you know, being just kicked aside. Um, I would hope that, you know, to work to settle it, uh, settle the differences, you know, the property owners, before we tear up another piece of land, like, is this, how hard was that effort put in? Was it really for and, and worked for?
Well, I, I, I would take objection to tearing up pieces of land, that's absolutely not what's being proposed here. If the two towers were demolished, which that's a part of this proposal, they'd be restored to grade, and they'd be restored to the current uses of those lands, which is vacant land, and we are taking two towers down and putting one up. So for as far as, you know, visual, um, impact, we're reducing the visual impact by this application, and those two other properties, they're more than welcome to submit applications to any of the town boards to be developed, a planner that's allowed by the zoning code. There's nothing that prohibits the future development of those properties of that area. This is just an application that we have that's been, for a number of reasons, put forth before the zoning board, um, and accomplished this, a number of goals, and I think it's worth, uh, considering and approving.
Okay, 'cause I, you did, I heard the, um, the, the, the old gentleman said it was 100 by 100 that they're gonna level. That's a, that's a 100 by 100 of, piece of land now we're leveling when you have land already equipped for the facilities, and then the access to get in and out, that's another area that gets taken out, and the facilities to run in and out, I, I, I was here when before the cell towers went up, you see what happened, and it, it's just, uh, yeah, it's a concern that I've been here for 23 years and, um, just rather not, you know, my, just, or personally, personally, I've been here, you know, not many of us on this block, so it's a hard fight, um, but for me, I've been here a long time, and, and I just wanna try to preserve this area the way as much as we can, that's, that's my concern.
I appreciate that, and, um, if I could clarify one thing, um, even though the compound is 100-foot by 100-foot, the tree line by the location of where we put the facility is not the entire compound, there's just along the edge right here of the compound that may have some trees removed. So, the, the most and the majority of the facility is in already cleared vacant land, and as I reminded the board earlier in the meeting, um, the environmental review, um, was put forth before the town board as acting as lead agency for, versus SEIGRA, and they, uh, adopted a negative declaration. Um, there was a, a heavy review of the environmentals, uh, the applicant went above and beyond and did soil sampling tests, um, and all the soils came back clean. Uh, we have the environmental expert here with us tonight, if there's any questions from the board, uh, regarding the environmental approval or the negative declaration that was issued.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else to be heard? Just unmute and speak up.
Yes, yes.
Okay, you got him?
I can't. Am I on?
If you just kinda, kinda raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
State your name and your address.
My name is Mertad Kohanim. My address is 4 Somerset Drive South, Great Neck, New York, and I, uh, I'm speaking to the board in opposition to the application made by the applicant.
Do you have any properties out here?
I own the property, well, I am part of the ownership group that owns 201 Fresh Pond Avenue, where one of the towers is located. First, I wanted to thank the board for giving us the opportunity to be heard, uh, I wanted to thank every one of you who's staying out tonight to, uh, hear our objections to it. Uh, I do, before I get started, uh, I have a request from this board, because I received the notice, uh, regarding this hearing about nine days ago or 10 days ago, and to be frank with this board, I haven't been able to find an attorney in Tana Riverhead to represent the interests of Simak Associates, the owner of the property, in this hearing. I have called five attorneys in the town of Riverhead. Three of them, who are prominent attorneys, have basically told me that they only represent people who are applicants. In other words, they represent large corporations that could afford to pay them huge sums of money to basically get what they want. And in this situation, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm in a bad situation because I can't even get an expert attorney to represent me in this, in this, in this matter. So the first thing I ask is that Mr. Kenny, who I respect immensely, has come before this board and has told it that I have in tow a bunch of experts and a bunch of, uh, graphs and, and other items that he's presenting to this board, and he's very eager to see if he could get this thing approved tonight. And I have to say to you that in 10 days, that I haven't been able to find an attorney, I could certainly not find any experts to oppose the application made by Crown Castle in this matter. I had no idea, I had no idea that Crown Castle has any kind of application before the board, whether they have even made an application to the town of Riverhead for anything. Nobody ever told me, as far as I know, and that's God honest truth, I'm under oath. Uh, I do wanna hear outright, before I say anything else, whether the board will consider voting on this matter tonight, because if they do, then I have to say a lot more. If they are going to allow people, including their Donna and, and, and Carol, and Carl, and, uh, the other gentleman who spoke, uh, that this, this matter will be adjourned to a different date so that everybody can go and get the facts as to, uh, where everything is gonna be and how they could defend themselves in this case, then I will say very little, and I will end it, and I will, we could adjourn the case. But if the court, if, 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 if this board actually wants to rule on this kind of an application, uh, then I think I, I, I have to take your time and prevent you from application, then I think I have to take your time and prevent you from watching the debate and actually hear what I have to say, because I do have to object to this. I think the application is at most frivolous and shouldn't be entertained by the town.
We can certainly, we can certainly put this off in the next meeting. We can certainly put this off in the next meeting. You're not going to make a vote tonight. If you have a question, you need time to get representation, fine.
Okay, then in that case, I don't need to speak at this point. I don't want to take anybody's step.
May I interject? And may I ask, he's stated that, on the record, his objection to this application is that he owns or is an owner in interest in the two existing towers that may come down as part of this application. None of that stated before this board is a zoning or planning reason to deny this application. Not refusing an adjournment, but I would put forth before this board if it's entertaining, allowing additional time solely for the purpose to hire an attorney to have a lease negotiation during a zoning board hearing, that's not going to be fruitful to this application.
I, no matter what, whether I get an adjournment or not, since you said that, Mr. Kenny, I have no choice but to now present some of my oppositions to this board. And I will also ask for an adjournment so that people who are concerned can have the opportunity to have legal counsel represent them in this proceeding, because I think due process, due process requires that they have the opportunity to be represented by counsel, and they shouldn't be bamboozled to come before this board on nine days' notice.
Sir, can I just ask you a question?
So I will hereby, if the court allows.
Sir, sir, can I, pardon me for interrupting. Are you comfortable with telling us just the general nature of your objection? In other words, what, in general terms, why are you against us?
Why? Because the proposition that, one of the propositions that's made by Mr. Kenny and one of the promises made to this board is that they will take two towers and give us one tower. That is completely false. Because as a property owner whose property has had a tower for 30 years, I'm not, I'm not walking away from my property that has a right to have a tower. I will be putting a tower up as soon as they want to take their tower down. So that's first of all. They're not going to get, there's not going to be a negative in this situation that they, the fact that they're coming to you and saying they're going to take two towers and make it into one, it's their idea. Their idea is they're going to take two and tell you this is going to be one. I am sitting here and telling you that I will build another tower on a property that's, that has had a tower on it for 30 years. The, the, the fact of the matter is, the fact of the matter is that the tower will have, the new tower will have an adverse impact on the adjacent properties. Okay? We just went through the fact that the property to the north, and I want to tell something to this board because I think Carol and Donna, I think they're new buyers, I think they bought their property very recently. And I tell you something, the location where these two towers, the existing towers are, the, the location, those towers have been in that location, one of them, I think, since 1990, and one of them, I think, since 1994 or something. They've been there for a long time, as far as I'm concerned. These are grandfathered into these properties and into these locations. If you review the trajectory of the house that is built on the property that's owned by Carol and Donna, and I'm sorry, I don't know their last name, I'm just reading off the...
No problem.
Okay? If you look at the trajectory of that house, how that house is situated on the land that it sits on, it sits away from the tower, the two towers. It's actually facing what I believe to be a northwesterly direction. I am sure there was a reason why that house is not facing Fresh Pond Avenue.
Right.
Right. So I haven't looked at Mr. Kenny's papers until tonight, but I could tell you that there's a facility across the street, and by the way, and by the way, the, the map that you're on right now does not necessarily show, I mean, it doesn't show the, I don't know if that's the street, I don't know if that's, I can't, the cursor, is that on Fresh Pond, the cursor?
This is Fresh Pond Ave, right here.
Okay, so the facility to the left of that or to the east of that is the facility where the, the tower at 201 Fresh Pond is located, is that correct?
This is the lattice tower.
That's not, that's, that, that location is wrong.
What's this guy's name?
Because the lattice tower on 201 is at least two, at least 126 feet away from the, from Fresh Pond Avenue.
First name? First name? Excuse me, sir?
Yes.
I'd like to ask you a question. Let's say that folks go ahead with their tower, let's say it gets approved or whatever. You said you would continue on with your tower. Do you have customers for your tower?
Yeah, I'm working on customers.
Excuse me, I have, this is, I have to interject. He does not own the towers. He is a landlord who has a lease and a landlord position for these two towers. The tenant is the one who has a right to have the towers there. They also have a right to remove the towers there. There's nothing that guarantees him a tower on his property. And I think counsel for this board will inform the board that once the tower is removed, is demolished, the, both towers, as he admitted, were put up in 1990s, so they predate the zoning code that we're applying under today. So they would become non-conforming uses, which they are today, they would be removed, and then if, as soon as they're removed and demolished, there's an abandonment of the use, and there's no non-conforming use. And I don't know if he has connections with carriers and can find carriers for that, but he'd have to go through a whole zoning application process that we're going through to build a tower under the new zoning code, because he does not have a right to the infrastructure that's on his property. He has a right to have his land, but he does not have a right to guarantee those towers. Crown Castle is the one who has control of those two towers, and may be more than willing to condition our approval on the fact that both of those towers come down. We do not want to pull a fast one. We're not trying to build a third tower and just have a third tower go up. I'd be more than willing to issue a condition of approval or accept a condition of approval that both of the existing towers that are part of this application are coming down before the new tower can receive a building permit. I mean, they won't come down, but we'll give you bonds for them, because we'll have to have the switchover be done so that there's not a loss in coverage. But we would be willing to have that no CEO can be issued until we have both of those towers come down, and that before a building permit is issued, we'd be more than willing to work with the town to give any additional assurances that we bring those two existing towers down, whether it be removal bonds or what other method that would give the additional assurance, that we're not trying to keep up those two existing towers. And no one that is a landlord can require the infrastructure that's owned by another company to stay up.
I think, I appreciate, Mr. Kenny, but I don't think that anybody should have the right to say that a property owner that has had an antenna on his property for 25 years should not be or be precluded from even making an application to the, to the, to the town of Riverhead to erect another antenna on the property that has had an antenna for 25 or 30 years. So I understand that I may have to go through hoops, just like you may be going through hoops, but I have the right to make an application. And I don't think, and I, and I know, I understand that Crown Castle is a billion or trillion dollar company, but they're not anymore, as far as I'm concerned, they shouldn't have any more rights than a citizen of this country. In other words, we should all be equal to be able to make a living. Crown Castle is certainly making a living. I think I should be allowed to also make a living. If that, that's including getting into and working and renting a tower, just like you guys. Is that, is that okay? Is that something that I'm permitted to do as a, as a property owner?
Sir, my statement, you must have misunderstood, was not that...
No, I don't think I misunderstood, sir. I did not misunderstood. Now, I will move on because this is my time.
Hold it.
Hold on. You're more than welcome to make your application. My point was that there's been a change in the zoning law from how this town approves these types of facilities.
Counsel, counsel, we're not going to go back and forth between you and the, and the other person on the line. I think the chairman has something he'd like to say.
We're going to do a reserve decision. And we're closing the meeting.
I believe you have another public...
Go ahead.
Yes, good evening.
I just, excuse me, I need to speak for just one more side.
No, no, you hold off for a second. Hold on. Who's the other gentleman wants to speak?
Yeah, good evening. My name is Christopher Kent. I'm speaking on behalf of one of the property owners who currently has a Crown Castle tower on their site. This is the Lysom, that owns the tower that's southeast of the proposed tower. You want me to be sworn in?
You're an attorney.
I know, I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, you're all right.
Okay, I'm here on behalf of Lysom Associates. They represent, they, they are the property owners of the tower southeast of the proposed site. I just have a couple of questions. First of all, the owners are still interested and are still engaged in discussions with Crown Castle to maintain a relationship where they can continue to have their tower located on the property. So I'm not sure the testimony by Mr. Kenny was completely accurate. There's no end of negotiations, those negotiations are ongoing, according to my client. And I have not had the opportunity to look at anything because, as, as was earlier spoken, very recently was I contacted to even attend this meeting tonight and to listen to the presentation. I do have a few questions for Mr. Kenny. I appreciate the, the presentation he did make. I do have some questions about some of the things he said. When you said you were, that the, that there were some problems that Crown Castle's having with its current towers, were you referring to the towers themselves or just negotiations with the property owner? You're muted, you're muted, Mr. Kenny.
Negotiations with the property owner.
Okay, okay.
So if I can expand on that, we have no guarantees that we can keep these sites active. And so the first initial goal was that we needed to find a site that would be able to keep the same level of service.
Okay, can I ask you a couple of other questions if it's okay with the board? I mean, I'll ask the board.
Go ahead.
You were showing some visual impact from the road. You had some photos showing the proposed location for the new tower. That, that site is wide open, by the way. There's been trucks coming in and out of that site, removing sand and, and materials from that site. It's not, it's not wooded from Fresh Pond Avenue. And you had a photo, Mr. Kenny, that you showed of the proposed tower on a, on a visual impact of the proposed tower from Fresh Pond Avenue.
Sure. So we have photos. Again, the proposed property does not have access. There is a shared property owner, but a separate property that's to the south.
Well, no, you're not, there is, there is an access road that's been, that's been made from, if you go, if you look at that picture you have right there, you look at a little beyond the fence line, there is an access road. If you go on Google Earth, you can see it. That site is wide open. There's a dirt road that goes into the site. And in fact, on Google Earth, when you're looking at it, there are trucks on the property that have accessed the site. And there's a lot of disturbance there, a lot of sand has been moved around north of the fence line there.
So there's two things. So first, the access drive you're talking about is for the adjoining property owner, the same property owner. But we have a new curb cut, and we received a new curb cut for this property because it's a separate parcel. There were some piles of fill because he has a landscaping company on, on the property. This was, again, something that was studied by the planning department. The applicant went through a phase one and phase two environmental assessment. All of the reports came back that there was nothing nefarious in the dirt. It was all came back clean. And the town board at its previous meeting on October 20th issued a negative declaration based on all of the environmental review.
I'm not disputing that. So what I'm asking you is about the visual impact of the putting the new tower on the proposed site, the visual impact upon people driving up Fresh Pond Avenue. You had a photograph, you actually showed it earlier.
Sure.
Going the tower and the visual of the tower from Fresh Pond Avenue.
Sure, pulling it up. Yep. There's, there's some areas on Fresh Pond Avenue where you will be able to see the facility. But there's also other areas in the town where people can currently see two facilities. And in those areas, we've shown viewpoint 17, where we're going to take a view that is going to be somewhere where you can...
No, I saw that one. Can I ask though, do you have a visual, a view of the existing tower from Fresh Pond Avenue? I'd like, the existing tower on the, on the west side of Fresh Pond. What can you see of the tower as you're driving up Fresh Pond Avenue, the existing tower?
We don't have that. We didn't, that wasn't a focus of this application. The focus was to give the visual impact or the visibility of the proposed facility.
Well, part of your claim is that you are lessening the impact. And I know, because I used to live in Timber Park, and when you drive up Fresh Pond Avenue, you currently don't even notice the cell tower on the west side of Fresh Pond Avenue because it's in the woods. And the only access to that tower is just a very small road that's cut in the woods, not even, not even improved. It's just a kind of a dirt, in fact, if you look on Google Earth, it's covered with leaves, and you can't even see the tower from Fresh Pond Avenue. I can tell you that by the, where you're proposing the site, it's cleared, the whole southern, the whole property to the south of the cell tower is completely cleared because that's where Lawlor Stone does its work. And that second driveway access, which is cut through, is also completely cleared of trees. And when that tower goes in, you're going to be able to see that tower on the east side of Fresh Pond Avenue, right there, big as life, because you're going to see it as you're coming north on Fresh Pond, you're going to see it, the minute the clearing is for Lawlor Stone, the property to the south, you're going to be able to see that tower probably for a good 500 feet as you're driving along Fresh Pond, maybe more, maybe 600, 700 feet. I'm on Google Earth right now.
Mr. Kenton?
Yes.
There's already been a special permit issued by the town board on this.
No, no special permit, no, no special permit. The only thing that's happened so far is the town typed the action as a type one action. They accepted the environmental analysis that was done, and they made a determination that, that a negative, a negative declaration was adopted, that there was no significant environmental impact.
Okay, so that's been a special permit?
Now they've even called the public, bring it in.
That's been a special permit?
I haven't seen a special permit yet. But if I can show, there are, this is an existing view of the facility that is to the southeast. So this facility can already be seen along Fresh Pond Ave.
Yeah, in a winter, you're showing a winter view, obviously.
Obviously a winter view, because we are showing a winter view for our sites as well, which is the worst-case scenario, which is the correct way to show a balloon test.
All right.
And what we're showing here is that you can already see the existing facility. These facilities aren't invisible. But what we've done is we've had a situation where we have looked at the facility's location, and we presented the likability of places where you can possibly see it. And there's places in this town where you can see those two existing facilities. And in the replace of, of the two existing facilities with this one, there will be only a view of one. There's also several areas along the town that have residential populations, which we've shown do not have a view of the tower. The closest property, which is our neighbors to the north, they have an existing view of a tower across the street from them, and there's a tower about 1,000 feet down here. here. We are moving a tower across the street essentially, and it's gonna be the same height, there's still a vegetation buffer between the property, residential property to the north, there may be some views of it along the street, we've shown this with viewpoint two and viewpoint three.
All right, council, I, I, I hate to interrupt you.
We've also shown that five and eight, you can't.
Counselor, I hate to interrupt.
We're debating something that should be held in a special permit, this is ridiculous.
Excuse me.
It's getting out of hand.
That's true. We're here about the variance, we're not up here about anything else.
We're not here about business deals or.
That's, that's it. We're here about the variance.
One simple request.
That's another board.
That really should be brought up in a special permit meeting.
One simple request to the board. I, I've just asked that you keep the public hearing open for one meeting to give us an opportunity to gain additional information. Perhaps I can speak to Mr. Kenny in the interim, and we can maybe work out some of the differences. I would just ask that you keep the public hearing open for one meeting, and then give us an opportunity to have additional conversations. I have nothing against Mr. Kenny, I'm, I'm a professional, I do the same type of work that you do, Mr. Kenny, I would like to have an opportunity at least to discuss it with you, but I can tell you that this proposed site, uh, as far south as the, uh, Hartview Motors, I think it's called, but whatever that motor that, uh, that car dealership is to the south, that is completely cleared as you're coming up Fresh Pond Avenue.
Okay, excuse me, council. Counselor, here's what we're gonna do.
Come on, Chris, that's enough.
We're gonna, we're gonna close the meeting, we're gonna leave it open for ten days for written, any written statements?
Comments.
But other than that, we're, we're gonna have a vote tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to have an opportunity to speak.
Who's this?
My name is Ben Mahfahar, I represent Miller D R V, which has an interest in Lysom Associates.
Raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, help you got.
I do.
Okay. Again, we are here about the variance.
I, I, I take, I, I would, I appreciate to be given the opportunity.
Say the name and your address again.
My name is Ben Mahfahar, four seventy-five Northern Boulevard, Gretnick, New York. Uh, Mr. Kenny represents a, uh, a company that has forty thousand cell sites, and in his opening, uh, statement, he said that, that there are issues with the, with the, the antennas, the only issues that are there have to do with the.
Excuse me, that's irrelevant, we hear, we hear about.
I, I will move on, I will move on.
We're here about a variance, we're not here about your negotiations.
I'm not sure what his point was gonna be.
What's your interest in this?
What's your, what's your point?
Turn him on, turn your. You're, you're mute right now, unmute yourself. Can't hear you.
I'd like to address the, the, the new sites that, uh, they're proposing to use. Uh, the, what they're proposing, as, uh, they're showing on the, on the map, being that I've been to that site for at least, uh, ten, ten times during the last, uh, year, uh, I do work with a company that uses that space, and the information being presented to this board is completely incorrect.
Okay, thank you.
First of all, there's the site.
That's it, that's it.
Done, done, thank you.
We're here about the variance, that's it.
Enough.
It's another board you guys have to speak to, not us.
It's a special permit hearing, we're here for a fall-down zone, and that's it. We'll give you ten days, that's it. Then we're gonna make a decision, a reserve decision.
So we're closing the meeting, we'll accept anything written for the next ten days.
I, I can't even get a lawyer in ten days.
Mute him.
I can't get a lawyer in ten days.
Let's not have a problem. Mute him.
You have one?
I have.
Yep, that's it.
I need time to get an attorney.
At your own admission, sir, you've already had ten, and I need ten more.
Who's got the reading? Who's got the reading? Enough of this.
We're gonna adjourn it? Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, we're going to, uh, close the meeting, we're going to accept, uh, additional written comments for the next ten days, and then we're going to have a reserve decision on November twelfth.
Second. Mr. Gazillo?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Next variance, please.
Wow.
Hill number twenty-three, zero four zero, Easton Park. Three Hill Street, Waiting River, tax map number six hundred forty-nine, one forty-point one, R B eighty zoning. For variances and/or relief from chapter three oh one, section thirty-one, where proposed front yard setback is eight point one feet, minimum required is sixty feet, where proposed rear yard setback is nineteen point two feet, minimum required for accessory structure is twenty feet, where proposed impervious surface coverage is nineteen point five one percent and maximum permitted is fifteen percent, and section two twenty-two E, where proposed addition creates an increase in the degree of nonconformity of a pre-existing nonconforming structure which is not permitted.
All right, who's, who's speaking here? Mr. Hill?
Yes, hello, my name is, uh, Robert Foley.
Okay, raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, help you got.
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman.
All right, your name and address?
My name is Robert Foley, owner of New Concept Engineering, and I represent the owners of the property on Hill Street. My office located at four six five five Wisconsin Highway in Port Jefferson Station, New York, one one seven seven six.
State your case.
Okay, the, um, the, the property, the property there, they're looking for relief, um, to put an extension on the property over an existing patio, concrete patio, um, it's a two-bedroom house, they're extend, they're extending the, uh, property just basically to square off the property and still commit, maintain a two-bedroom house. Um, they've outgrown the house, they have a child now, and they have, outgrown it, so they're gonna put, um, a, a, a bedroom, a larger bedroom, and then an office space in the property.
All right, I have no problem with this one.
Uh, sir, when you're out on the street looking at the house, uh, the left portion of the house, the rear's got a huge blue tarp over, it's really up high, what is that?
That, that we have, uh, there was a failure of the roof section, so it's, uh, trying to keep water out from the interior.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is there anyone else to be heard on this matter? Unmute. Anyone else? Chip, nobody? Okay, let's have a reading.
I, I move the appeal of Steffenberg, three Hill Street, Waiting River, S C T M number six hundred dash four nine dash one dash four zero point one, dash R B eight zero zoning. For variances and/or relief from chapter three oh one, section thirty-one, where proposed front setback, yard setback is eight point one feet, and minimum required is sixty feet, where proposed rear yard setback is nineteen point two feet, and minimum required for accessory structure is twenty feet, where proposed impervious surface coverage is nineteen point fifty-one percent and maximum permitted is fifteen percent, and section two 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 E, where proposed addition creates an increase in the degree of nonconformity of a pre-existing nonconforming structure which is not permitted, be approved in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second. All right, Mr. Gazillo?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So your appeal has been granted, you'll have the paperwork within two weeks, and best of luck with the program.
Good luck. Thanks, sir, thanks very much, and have a good evening.
You too. Thanks.
Bye now.
Appeal number twenty twenty zero four two, Peter Galla, thirty-three West Street, South Jamesport, tax map number six hundred ninety-two, three sixteen, R B eighty zoning for variances and/or relief from chapter three oh one, section thirty-one, where proposed lot coverage is thirty-nine point two one percent, maximum permitted is fifteen percent, where proposed front yard setback is twenty-one point five feet, minimum, minimum required is sixty feet, where proposed rear yard setback is thirty-five point five feet, minimum required is seventy-five feet, and where proposed side yard setback is five point five feet, and minimum required is thirty feet.
All right, who's, who's to be heard on this one? Uh, Mr. Stronsky, can I raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, help you got. Unmute, we can't hear you.
Uh, I should be unmuted.
There you go, you're good.
Okay.
State your name and your address, sir.
Robert Stronsky, forty-four Circle Drive, Jamesport, uh, I'm the architect representing, uh, Mr. Peter Galla, the owner of the property. Uh, it is, uh, a property that has been before this board, uh, a few years back, uh, where we were before this board for reconstruction of the detached garage, I know some of the members may have, uh, remembered that.
Yes.
Uh, what we are before the board now, currently, is we're looking to do some upgrades to the existing primary residence, uh, we're looking to reconstruct, uh, the rear concrete, uh, stoop, uh, or porch, uh, we're looking to remove that and to, uh, build the frame, uh, rear deck, um, which is used, uh, as a access, uh, to the rear of the property. The front portion of the house, which has a small vestibule, uh, that's covered in stone, uh, we're looking to remove that and to re, the frame, uh, roof-covered front porch. Uh, the side yard setbacks that we, that we are proposing, uh, obviously is due to the fact of, uh, existing nonconforming used house, the existing house is closer to the property, uh, uh, the impact to the front obviously is with the addition, we are moving closer to the front. Uh, we did submit a picture, uh, that was dropped off today, I don't know if the members saw it, basically, it's a, it's a, uh, photograph that I took standing in front of the property looking due north, which basically shows that the, it's from property to the north, uh, is fairly close to, uh, West Street, uh, and I do not believe that our addition is going to be as close as that structure currently is. Um, beyond that, we've also made an application to the Land Mark Preservation Committee, uh, where they, uh, given a recommendation of a bolt with a few, uh, recommendations that we feel we could conform with, uh, to the facility, and they didn't have any other objections to that. Uh, beyond that, I opened it up to any, have, uh, the owner, Mr. Peter Galla, is also meeting, so if there's any questions to the owner, uh, you can address.
It almost looks like a knockdown, but it isn't, it's just a updating of all the appearances on the exterior, right? Remod- modernizing them?
Correct, what, what we're actually looking to do, in, in addition to the front porch, uh, I, I didn't mention, we are dormering our second floor, so we're going to make the second floor bedrooms much more usable. As part of this, Mr. Galla has, uh, a young family that is growing, um, and the need for us upstairs is also. First floor and the lower level are going to remain intact, uh, we're just looking to upgrade the, with the front porch and the rear, uh, rear deck.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
I have a question.
Anybody out there?
Is there anybody, any of the neighbors to be heard on this matter? Chip, we have anybody on there? No? Okay, let's have a reading.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I move that the appeal of Peter Galla, thirty-three West Streets, South Jamesport, S C T M, number six hundred dash nine two dash three dash sixteen, R B eighty zero, uh, R B eight zero, I beg your pardon, zoning, for variances and/or relief from chapter three oh one, section thirty-one, where proposed lot coverage is thirty-nine point twenty-one percent and maximum permitted is fifteen percent, where proposed front yard setback is twenty-one point five, and a minimum required is sixty feet, where proposed rear yard setback is thirty-five point five, and a minimum required is seventy-five feet, and where proposed side yard setback is five point five feet, and minimum required is three zero feet, be approved in accordance with the applications and sketches and amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second. Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, Mr. Stronsky, you know the process after this, you have the paperwork there in a week or so. Thanks very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appeal number twenty twenty zero four three, Anne Blazer, one eighteen Accoli Street, Riverhead, tax map number six hundred one oh three one twenty point one, R A forty zoning for variances and/or relief from chapter three oh one, section eleven, where existing lot size is eleven thousand six hundred twenty-three square feet, and minimum required is forty thousand square feet, where existing lot width is seventy-five feet and minimum required is one hundred and fifty feet, where proposed rear yard setback is five feet and minimum required for accessory structures is twenty feet, and where proposed impervious surface coverage is thirty-six percent and maximum permitted is fifteen percent.
All right, Mr. Stronsky, again, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, help you got.
I do.
State your name and your address.
Robert Stronsky, forty-five, Jamesport, New York. I, uh, I'm the architect representing, uh, the owners of the parcel. Uh, what you have before you, currently, there is a detached structure closer to the side yard and the rear yard, uh, out of the, uh, project was approved, um, making upgrades to the existing structure, and was also granted an accessory approval as well, um, upon further investigation into the destruction, uh, going forward, it was deemed that the existing structure does not, um, really doesn't make sense to improve upon since most of the structure is, is buried, um, once I had gotten involved, there was a.
Uh, you're, you're going in and out, Mr. Stronsky.
Do you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so, a further investigation of the parcel, uh, of the property, it was deemed that the structure, uh, really should be reconstructed, so therefore, what we have done is proposed a new structure, uh, in place of the existing structure. We are also proposing to move it further from the rear yard to create a five-foot setback, and from the, uh, side yard to be ten feet, uh, which would be within the old residency zoning. And we are also, uh, looking to use this detached structure as an accessory approval, we approved in the existing structure. Uh, if any board members have any.
What'd he say?
I think the list is.
He asked us if we have any questions.
I have none.
No, we, we looked at it, we went to see it, and it looks like we're gonna pull the property off, uh, rebuild the building, and move it east from the existing neighbor, and, uh, I don't have any problem with it, it looks like a real awesome project.
I don't. Anybody have any opposition?
Okay, is there anyone else to be heard on this matter? And the neighbors? Chip, do we have anybody, Chip?
I think I have one, I need the cell phone.
If there's anyone out there that wants to be heard on this, unmute yourself? No? Okay, who's got it?
Not me.
Frank, you got this one?
No, I got next one.
I don't think I have it. If I do, I lost it.
Oh, God, put a bell on him.
Hey, I didn't mean it.
I can wing it, I can wing it.
Hold on.
Do you have a copy of the resolution? I'm sorry, I don't have it.
I don't have it, I got my two.
You don't have a paper copy?
You don't?
You got it, Rob?
I, I don't have it, I can wing it.
Oh, you can do it. Go ahead, my honor.
All right. I move that the appeal of Anne Blazer, one eight, one one eight Accoli Street.
I found it.
You got it? I've, I've started it.
I told you.
One one eight Accoli Street, Riverhead, uh, Riverhead, S C T M, number six hundred dash one zero three dash one dash two zero point one, R A four zero zoning for variances and/or relief from chapter three oh one, section eleven, where existing lot size is eleven thousand six hun- six hundred seventy, six hundred twenty-three feet, square feet, and the minimum required is forty thousand square feet, and where existing lot width is seventy-five feet and minimum required is one hundred and fifty feet, where proposed rear yard setback is five feet and minimum required for an accessory, for accessory structures is twenty feet, and where proposed impervious surface coverage is thirty-six percent and maximum permitted is fifteen cent, uh, fifteen percent, be approved in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the board, the building inspector. Charles, Jerry, Charles, I call.
Second. Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So again, Mr. Stronsky, thank you very much, best of luck.
McDonald's.
Last appeal, appeal number twenty twenty zero two nine, Edward Murphy, twenty Hickory Court, Waiting River, tax map number six hundred thirty- Wading River, tax map number six hundred thirty-six two nine point four, R B eighty zoning. For variances and/or relief from chapter three oh one, section thirty-one, where proposed side yard setback is three point two feet, minimum required for accessory structures is twenty-five feet. And where rear yard setback is eleven point one feet, minimum required for accessory structures is twenty feet.
Evening, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, Abby. Do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, self-evident?
I do.
State your name and your address.
Amy DeVito, Wood Hall Expediting, with offices at ten thirty-one Main Street, Port Jefferson, New York.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is actually our second time back. We were held over from the September hearing. The board was curious about how we were going to run electric to the detached structure. So I did provide Carissa with some information. The electrician is going to be Eastman Electric. And they are planning on, actually, there's going to be no meter pan or anything like that over at the detached structure. It's actually just going to be run from a box at the pool. There's electric for the pool nearby to the structure. So they'll be running a line from the pool to create the lighting needed in the accessory structure.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any board members have any questions? Is there anyone out there to be heard on this matter? Nobody? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move the appeal of Edward Murphy, twenty Hickory Court, Wading River, Suffolk County Tax Map, six hundred dash thirty-six dash two dash nine point four, R B eighty zoning. For variances and/or relief from chapter three oh one, section thirty-one, where proposed side yard setback is three point two feet and minimum required for accessory structures is twenty-five feet. And where rear yard setback is eleven point one feet